Wednesday and half a day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 2:01 PM, Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. Notice of this this afternoon's virtual hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders in the local media on March 15th, 2022, for the five-day notice, and March 21st for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, Speaker Therese Turlahe, who has joined me here today, so to do as Massey, Speaker. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 266-36COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to add a new Section 14104P to Article One, Chapter 14, Division One of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing Guam Water Works Authority to facilitate repairs on private property. The second item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 267-36COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and co-sponsored by Senator Teloty Taitigui. It's an act to amend Section 13103 and Section 13104, all of Article One, Chapter 13, Division One of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 2121 to Article One, Chapter Two of Title 28 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to establishing fair process resolving rate payer disputes. So the committee will continue to receive testimony until 4:00 PM, March 30th, on Wednesday, 2022. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It could be dropped off at the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. For this virtual public hearing, the hosts will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. Virtual background should not be utilized during this hearing, and participants' face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking into the microphone. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. The order of questioning begins with the chairperson, followed by my colleagues. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. And now to begin our agenda. Bill Number 266-36COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, is an act to add a new Section 14104P to Article One, Chapter 14, Division One, Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing Guam Water Works Authority to facilitate repairs on private property. Notices were sent to PUC, CCU, Guam Water Works Authority and Guam Power Authority. The fiscal note we received, I would quote, cite from the fiscal note. So citing an article from local media outlets dated March 18th, 2022, GWA's general manager stated during a meeting with CCU that the proposed customer assistance program is part of a larger water affordability program submitted to the PUC that has not yet been acted on and is part of GWA's five-year rate plan. The GWA general manager further stated that large unpaid water bills affect all customers, and the customer-assisted program would be funded by revenue collected from all customer categories, allowing GWA the opportunity to, for a small expenditure, fix those conditions and allow for customers to afford their water bill. The article further states that according to GWA general manager, the bill, as currently written, does not place any caps on GWA's assistance to eligible customers, and that GWA would prefer the bill to be consistent with proposed customer service program already submitted to the PUC. He adds, "GWA's proposal calls for leak detection and repair on a limited basis." Based on the fiscal comments received from GWA, the customer-assisted program costs would approximately be $5 million per year with modest annual adjustments upward from program growth. The percentage of expenses from the $5 million cost would be as follows: 49.7% to administratively qualified bill assistance; 14.9% for supplemental bill assistance; 5% for water audits; 20.9% for public plumbing leak detection repair; 8.8% for program administration; and 0.7% for data clearinghouse. As of this time, we have not received, oh, we did receive one written testimony, which I believe will be provided by Attorney Hareki, if I'm not mistaken. I would like to just provide some introduction remarks before we begin to call the, those that have come to testify. Also, before I start, I'd like to recognize Attorney Hareki from the PUC, General Manager from GWA, Miguel Bordalio, and Chris Budasi, also from Guam Water Works Authority. Okay, as far as introductions, Bill 266-36 aims to authorize GWA to establish a customer assistance program on or before July 1st, 2022, that would provide leak detection repair services upon consent of private property owners, provide volumetric discounts for water wastewater services, provide supplemental bill assistance, reduce or waive fees, and provide water use audits, conservation education and incentives to ensure continued public access to clean drinking water for residents who are eligible for the customer assistance program. The delayed discovery of and response to water leaks on private property can result in increased water bills beyond reach and potentially lead to subsequent disconnections for our most vulnerable populations, such as low-income elderly and those on fixed incomes. Water is a basic human right and a vital resource. It is critical that access to drinking water is ensured, especially during this public health emergency. Bill 266-36 aims to work hand-in-hand with the efforts of Guam Water Works Authority to reduce non-revenue water from aging and leaking water pipes on public property and easements. Water loss from both private and public infrastructure adds to the operational costs of GWA. It takes a lot of energy and monetary resources to pump water hundreds of feet from our aquifer and miles to residences throughout our island. Water loss from leaking pipes results in avoidable costs that will be borne by all ratepayers. Efforts to reduce water loss, whether on public or private property, is an important measure in protecting our aquifer and water resources, which is the basis of sustaining life on Guam. Guam is blessed with abundant sources of drinking water. The northern Guamlands aquifer, which is seen as a natural wonder because it took millennia to develop through geologic and biological processes, such as the deposition of millions of shells of foraminifera, supplies most of our island of drinking water. It is our responsibility to make sure that it is protected for ours and future generations and all those that rely upon it. Bill 266-36 is also part of a larger discussion of affordability of water, especially at a time when we are experiencing increased inflation, the need to overhaul our water and wastewater infrastructure with an estimated price tag of $1 billion that is also part of the environmental compliance with the Safe and Clean Drinking Water Acts. Bill 266-36 proposes to authorize GWA to implement proactive measures to provide affordable water to our most vulnerable populations. I look forward to recommendations and in the ensuing dialogue on this bill and other opportunities to address water access and affordability for all. So now I'd like to call upon those that have come to testify. So first on our list is Attorney Frederick Hareki, Administrative Chief, Administrative Judge of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. So you are recognized, Mr. Hareki.
Thank you, Chairperson Perez, Speaker Turlahe, GM Bordalio, and Assistant Chris Budasi. My name is Frederick Hareki. I'm the Chief Administrative Law Judge of the Guam Public Utilities Commission. However, the testimony today that I will present is from the consultant of the PUC. This is Georgetown Consulting Group, who has submitted written testimony on Bill Number 266-36. Georgetown has been a consultant for the PUC for over 30 years, and they have been involved in a number of proceedings dealing with charges to low-income customers, including for GPA, GWA, GTA, and the golf course. I'm going to read their testimony as is. Dear Senator Perez, first, an overview. The Guam Public Utilities Commission has requested Georgetown Consulting Group to review and provide comments on the proposed Bill 266-36 to assist the legislature and its deliberations on this bill. GCG was retained by the PUC to be its consultant in certain pending water rate proceedings, and that is the water rate case, GWA Docket 19-08. GCG has represented the PUC in that proceeding since April of 2019. The establishment of a low-income assistance program is currently being discussed by GCG and GWA in the proceeding. The proposed legislation would establish a Guam Water Works Authority Low-Income Assistance Program. These comments prepared by GCG are the sole recommendations and findings of GCG and have not been reviewed or approved by the commission. And I might add that the commission and its personnel feel that they should not be testifying today because the matter of the Customer Assistance Plan is presently pending in the litigated rate case before the Administrative Law Judge. Overall, GCG recommends and would support legislation that would modify current GWA lifeline regulations to permit targeted tariffs to a specific group identified by the commission. The bill as proposed is an unfunded mandate, and if possible, the legislature should identify and provide funding for the requirements in the bill. Discussion of policy issues. We observe that the proposed legislation is almost identical to the Customer Assistance Program proposed by GWA in Docket 1908, filed on May 1, 2021. This docket is nearing completion, and as of March 2022 awaits a final commission decision. Testimony was filed by GWA and GCG in this proceeding. Discovery was submitted and responded to by all parties. Hearings were held and cross-examination concluded. The extensive record in Docket 1908 is under review by a PUC Administrative Law Judge, and a decision is expected shortly. The commission decision with a full record would be valuable to the legislature. GWA has estimated that the annual cost of the Consumer Assistance Program filed in the rate proceeding to be $5.2 million annually and represents an approximately 5% increase in GWA's total company water and wastewater rates. Docket 1908 is a general rate case filing wherein GWA has proposed a 5% increase in its rates separate from the cost of the cap. When combined, if the cap and GWA's general rate increase were approved by the commission would represent a 10% in overall rates. Because the cap includes provisions that call for support to low-income customers, those low-income customers would see an ultimate increase of less than 10%. In other words, GWA's proposed cap filed in the rate proceeding would double GWA's proposed rate increase from 5% without a community consumer assistance program to 10% with a proposed cap if it was adopted by the commission. The 10% rate increase puts GWA's proposed increase in quote "rate shock" territory, an increase in double digits. As mentioned earlier, the GWA proposal in the current proceeding is based on a similar structure of principles contained in Bill 266-36, which would lead us to believe that the initial impact of the legislation, which requires GWA to create a Customer Assistance Plan program, would be for GWA to propose a plan similar to the one proposed in the rate filing with a rate impact similarly as proposed in the rate filing. It should be noted that staff presented testimony in the current proceeding that GWA does not need a base rate increase in fiscal year 2022. If there is no rate increase from the rate proceeding, we are uncertain whether this legislation permits a 5% annual increase for the cap, contrary to the commission's order. If so, implementation of Bill 266-36 would be confusing the customers with some rates increasing and some rates decreasing in a proceeding with no rate increase. It is not clear to GCG as to why Bill 266-36 is required to implement a low-income program, which increases rates to all other than low-income customers by a significant approximately $5 million annually. There are alternative ways of implementing a well-defined cap program under current commission rules that we will discuss in this presentation. Discussion of Bill 266-36. GCG believes that Bill 266-36 has many weaknesses that are discussed below that should be taken into account in the legislature's deliberations. The PUC derives its authority from statutes authorized by the Guam Legislature, which established the GPUC through legislation in 12 Guam Code Annotated. Manland State, like manland state legislatures, public utility commissions were created to assume the function of developing rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and setting rates for regulated industries such as GWA, thus relieving state legislatures of such duties and functions. Given that the PUC has the expertise and time to carefully review the issues, it seems more appropriate for the PUC to complete its hearing process for the benefit of the legislature in consideration of what further statutory authority and direction is needed. Having discretion left with the PUC to implement a Customer Assistance Program as its statutory role is advisable, rather than prescribing by law elements of any cap. If Bill 266-36 becomes law, any changes to it, required frequently with new utility programs, will need to be made through subsequent legislation. GWA's proposed cap is a new program with a new funding mechanism that seeks funds solely from retail customers representing a significant increase in GWA rates. Many low-income assistance programs are funded in whole or in part through grants such as the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, via grants from the US government, or an appropriate state agency. It appears the proposed legislation seeks funding solely from rates charged to retail customers other than low-income customers to pay for the cap. This is clearly an unfunded mandate with an initial price tag of $5.2 million annually. The targeted low-income rate reduction proposed in the rate proceeding may be one aspect of the cap that may require new legislative authority. The commission may not currently have the authority to provide a discount targeted to low-income residential customers, as Guam statute requires all customers within a rate category must be treated identically. While all parties do not share this view, the GPUC's order in Docket 1908 will provide some guidance on whether it lacks such authority. If this is the only component of a proposed cap for which the PUC lacks authority, the legislature could consider legislation on this limited issue to permit the commission to implement a discount for low-income customers only in any future implemented customer assistance program. In Docket 1908, GCG testified that implementing a cap at this time would also consider the fact that a cap would be very costly to implement and administer. GWA proposal in Docket 19-08 is to increase rates by $5.2 million annually to fund its Customer Assistance Program, representing a 5% increase in isolation, excluding GWA's proposal to increase rates to recover other costs of operating the utility operations. GWA's customers, like all citizens of Guam, are just beginning to recover from the COVID pandemic. Georgetown cites various impacts on the tourist arrivals and basically suggests that given the precarious economic situation of the island, everyone should be cautious about implementing the cap at this time. GCG believes that a well-designed Customer Assistance Program would benefit GWA's low-income residential customers and would represent an improvement over GWA's existing residential lifeline rate. That present rate reduces water rates for the first 5,000 gallons of monthly water usage to all GWA residential customers regardless of income. GCG agrees with the objectives of legislation, which are to provide meaningful relief and support to Guam's low-income residential population. However, we recommend that this legislation should be modified for a variety of reasons discussed below. If the legislature supports passage of the proposed legislation at this time, GCG has several recommendations which are identified below. The bill should contain a cost cap, and this is cap in terms of a limit, not the program, to ensure customers are protected from runaway costs, and GWA is presented with incentives to control costs and carrying out the prescribed programs. The bill should clarify that the rates charged to customers to recover the costs of the program are set by the PUC after review and hearing, like any other rate proposals. Without this, the commission's rate-making authority would be abridged. The bill should include language that provides the PUC discretion as to determine after review and hearing what customer classes are allocated a share of the costs of the program and are charged rates to recover those costs. Each of these recommendations are discussed in turn. I'm going to go through these rather quickly, but these are Georgetown's proposals to rectify various issues in the bill. Recommendation A would be a component of legislation that directs commissions to carry out new public policies. So it would basically provide a cap on the costs of the program to carry out the provisions. Excuse me, without a cap, the cost of the program would be unconstrained. Georgetown suggests language that could be done, for example, limiting the expenditure on the program to no greater than a certain percentage of the utility's retail revenues. Recommendation B is to clarify the legislation that the rates GWA charges customers are reviewed and approved by the commission. The commission, when it sets rates, ensures rates that are just and reasonable. While GWA would develop and file the program, it would still be the commission and not GWA to approve, modify, or reject the program, as well as set the rates to recover the costs. The amendment would just basically indicate that it is the commission that would review the components and allowed GWA to recover all prudently incurred costs, and it would develop the tariff schedules. The cost of tariff schedules, rates, conservation services, bills, credits, or program discounts to carry out the program must be collected in the rates of the utility through charges paid by all retail consumers and reviewed and approved by the commission. Concerns that Georgetown has with GWA's proposed Customer Assistance Program. Georgetown's testimonies in the case docket did discuss its reservations. To summarize, first is the cost, again, the $5.2 million annually. Secondly, Georgetown believes that the cap at present is somewhat ill-defined, has legal issues that GWA itself identified, and portions of the program are going to require legislative and PUC approvals that have not yet been obtained. The program would create a new, as yet undefined bureaucracy to administer an undefined cost. Procedures have not been definitively set up yet or received, or CCU or commission approval received. Georgetown indicates that this type of program that's based on subsidies from all other rate classes other than the low-income, and their view is quote "not the norm." GWA should seek legislative approval with PUC collaboration to provide legislation. That was done in the case of GTA. The PUC and GTA worked together to come up with legislation on the lifeline program for GTA. GWA's customers, like all citizens, again, are recovering from the pandemic. Georgetown repeats the issues about the timing of this program in this economy. GWA argues that the cost to provide water and wastewater service to low-income customers includes the cost of providing grants to those customers. They say that issue hasn't really been discussed at this point, so I won't talk about that one further. GWA in the current rate proceeding has not provided examples of the cap implementation other than to say one other jurisdiction had implemented what they assert is similar. Georgetown believes that the Customer Assistance Plan is something of a veiled attempt, they describe it, to circumvent the legal requirements of the lifeline rates. Because under lifeline rates, all customers in a class must be treated equally. For example, all residential customers, you don't generally have different rates for different subclasses of a class of customers. To provide the subsidy to low-income customers, GWA will create a new bureaucracy, which has not yet been defined, to receive funds from GWA, and then, under rules that are not defined, provide the funds only to low-income GWA water and sewer customers. Georgetown thanks you, Chairperson, and the legislature for consideration of its testimony. And I apologize for the length, but I think their testimony does cover a lot of points that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hareki, for your, for providing the testimony from Georgetown Consultants. And if you could stay on, we'll have some questions later.
All right.
So now I'd like to offer the floor to General Manager Miguel Bordalio from Guam Water Works Authority for their, for any testimony or comments.
Thank you, Chairwoman Perez. Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Bordalio. I'm the General Manager of Guam Water Works Authority. I'd like to start by indicating that we will provide written testimony before the deadline that has been submitted, so I won't go through our lengthy written testimony, but I will summarize. To start with, the need for affordability and customer assistance programs are being discussed at the national level by both regulators like US EPA and industry organizations such as the American Waterworks Association, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, and the Water Environment Federation. In fact, these industry groups have collaborated and recognized the importance of such affordability programs in supporting reasonable regulatory compliance schedules from the US EPA through EPA's financial capability assessment methods. So put another way, and specifically related to GWA's current regulatory compliance issues, our chances of seeking more time to make needed system improvements for regulatory compliance and thereby lengthening the time, also lessening the cost impact, are better if we have a program that addresses water affordability and our most financially vulnerable ratepayers. That being said, in 2018, GWA completed its Water Resource Master Plan, which included a 20-year financial plan. And that financial plan specifically addressed the impacts of our $1.2 billion capital improvement program over that 20-year period, and what that might mean for rates and those in our community. and those in our community that are economically challenged. And in that financial plan, there were recommendations to pursue an affordability program as well as to achieve a balance between revenue funding and debt financing for our capital improvement program. So this affordability program concept has been in discussion ever since we completed the master plan and conducted village meetings and public outreach to support that master plan, which was subsequently approved by the CCU and adopted for GWA. As the natural progression of our 20-year master plan, we also completed a five-year capital improvement program and financial plan, which includes our rate plan, and that was submitted to the PUC in 2019. In that package, we discussed the affordability program also during village meetings and public outreach to support the our rate application. Also, we discussed this among several community and civic organizations. In fact, the February 2020 Rate Order and Stipulation, which was issued by the PUC, required GWA to develop a customer assistance program and address affordability issues in our rate design through the completion of an analytical study, one of seven that the PUC required, and which we did complete and submit on time in March of 2021. About a month later, the recommendations from the analytical study were included in our May 1 rate application package, which was submitted to the PUC. And as of now, March 23, 2022, still has not been acted on by the PUC. So as Mr. Hiraki mentioned, we are waiting on the PUC to act on that, that package. One thing I will point out, the May 1 rate application package was what we asked for was different than what we presented at the evidentiary hearings in November, primarily because through the governor's commitment to provide us with federal relief funding to mitigate any rate increases, the ask, the rates that we've requested have been significantly reduced. So the numbers that Mr. Hiraki spoke of from Georgetown Consulting Group, the percentages, the rate increases that they speak of are outdated and not, not consistent with what we have actually submitted and is before the PUC right now. So that being said, we have seen examples, GWA's seen examples of our customers having difficulty with water affordability, as the senators, I'm sure, well know. We've seen customers affected by pandemic-induced impacts, inflation, and the rising cost of other basic commodities. Interestingly, Georgetown's arguments in this, in their testimony say that now's not the right time, and I would argue that now is actually the right time to provide this type of relief to our most financially vulnerable ratepayers. We've seen other customers get caught in a cycle of high-water bills resulting from leaks on private piping, leaving them with insufficient funds to repair the leak. So the high-water bills persist and continue until perhaps the customers are no longer able to keep up with their payments and then face disconnection. The measures proposed in Bill 266, we believe, would align with the proposed customer assistance program that GWA has already submitted and is currently before the PUC for their action. As you know, it includes income-qualified assistance for regular water bills and wastewater bills on a volumetric basis. Water audit and water conservation services, which are available not just to low-income customers, but to all customers, and income-qualified leak detection and repair services, again, available to low-income customers that face that situation. The cost of the cap, as Mr. Hiraki mentioned in his testimony, is about $5 million a year, with approximately half of that amount going towards administratively qualified bill assistance. And 20% of that amount or so for leak detection and repair. And details of these and other program components will be provided in our written testimony. There is broad policy support for customer assistance programs at the national level with an increasing number of water utilities implementing such services. Excuse me. The in summary, I would like to say that GWA can support Bill 266 with some recommended changes to reflect, first of all, the PUC's rate-setting authority and the current pledge by the government of Guam and GWA's bond indenture to ensure the autonomy of the CCU and the PUC, and then the authority of the PUC in setting rates. Replacing the, quote-unquote, "rate-funded" requirement in the bill and perhaps using language that seeks to authorize GWA to establish and seek funding in the form of rates or grants for a customer assistance program, we believe would sufficiently recognize the pledge by the government of Guam and also the PUC's rate-making authority. We would also recommend changing the date certain implementation that is in the current form of the bill to require the establishment of a customer assistance program within a certain timeframe, say 90 to 120 days after funding is secured. And that, we believe, would also address some of the concerns that have been raised. My testimony this morning, or sorry, this afternoon, addresses really only that these portions of Bill 266. We, I will say for the record that we disagree with some of the conclusions that have been testified already here by the PUC's consultant, and we will try to address those in our written testimony, which we'll submit before the deadline. All right. Thank you for your, for the opportunity to provide a testimony on this bill and for your attention. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, General Manager Bernalio. So we have Chris Bedasi. Did you want to add anything to the testimony provided? Okay. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senators Telo T. Taticui and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for joining, joining this public hearing. So in looking at, maybe if I can have, ask some questions to Attorney Hiraki. You know, there's no, the intention was to, not to increase rates, obviously. And that's something that I definitely, you know, is a concern for me. But this LEAP program that you mentioned, I know this is something that, if we can find funding through grants, I mean, that's always been my, I've been always advocating for, if we can find more grants to, instead of going into more debt, right, or put more burden on the ratepayers. You know, unfortunately, the infrastructure bill didn't have a lot for water infrastructure that would apply to, to us, but we did receive some funding. So I guess, if you, if we can talk about the LEAP. And also, I guess, one of the initial impetus for the bill was basically to help with low-income customers that have leaks on the private side, right? And then what I see from constituents is that they, they're unable to really repair it, and now, and then they see accumulating debt, right, accumulating bills. And so this was originally drafted as a proactive measure so that they don't have to face these, these financial burdens of costs that could have been avoided, as well as, you know, obviously protecting our aquifer. But so is there something that's there in the LEAP that can, we can utilize that can address this equally?
You know, other than what Georgetown mentioned, I have to say, I'm not familiar with what programs would be available for grants, other assistance. But I know GWA has been pretty proactive in seeking funds through, I think they call it the State Revolving Agency Program, or that, you know, they're always on the lookout for these kind of grants and loans. But I, I think I would also point out there are a number of other ways, other than just, you know, strict expenditure of funds that you could include in this program. I think Georgetown was trying to point out that there's kind of a broad array of tools you could use, like, you know, kind of reductions, kind of like with the 5,000 gallon reduction in price, you know, there may be ways to build those kinds of reductions for qualified low-income residents into the statute. But, but to do that, the PUC would have to have the authority. And I believe, and I have tried to look at the statutes, that, you know, it's a little questionable whether at this time PUC could do that without some additional statutory authority. But there, there may be other mechanisms like that that would allow for assistance to low-income people without necessarily having to fund it through rates. And I can't tell you the extent of that, but Georgetown's had a lot of experience. So I said, with GTA, the Low-Income Program there, and you know, those, I'm a little familiar with. The utility, the telecom companies each have rules and regulations that allow lower rates for telephone services, for example, for, for low-income customers. And they have a defined, pretty defined system of who's low-income and who qualifies. So I, I think the point is that there are a whole array of possible ways that the cap could be set up. And for that reason, Georgetown was suggesting, you know, it would be nice to have a collaboration between PUC, GWA, and the legislature to look at all the potential options. Because there, there may be a number of them, other than just, you know, strict provision of ratepayer funds. But, you know, that may be, that's, could be an element of the program too. I hope that helps.
Yes, I, I see it warrants further discussion. So yeah, this Lifeline Rate, Lifeline Program is based on consumption, the amount used, which doesn't necessarily, I mean, some of the things on Guam is that we have multigenerational households, right, that we share in the, share in the costs, which may kind of put us out of alignment with, you know, who's truly, you know, who needs the assistance, right? If, if you're having a sort of many people that use, you know, use water, but of course, you're going to go possibly go over the Lifeline Rate, but you still need assistance. So that is one of the concerns. The other thing is the compliance. So for me, affordability is the overarching concern, right? And, you know, one of the things that has increased, one of the reasons for the increase in water rates has been the capital improvement projects to address compliance issues. And you stand that US EPA is actually reevaluating what is the capability, the financial capability of a community. And so that, you know, it includes, you know, the debt ratio, the amount of, of what the population, Guam has undergone, I believe, a decrease in population. As, but that doesn't change the fact that we have a billion-dollar price tag for overhauling the system. And that doesn't, that's just construction costs alone. It doesn't include the financial cost, the capital cost. And so affordability is definitely a big topic that needs to be addressed. And what that means is, you know, obviously, the ones that are going to get hit first and the hardest are the low-income, fixed-income populations. It affects everybody, no doubt. This is something that I, again, would require, require further discussion.
That's correct. I think on the, you know, the cost, what Georgetown's really trying to point out, I mean, everyone, I think, would agree there are good benefits to be gained from a consumer assistance program. But, but as with everything, there are issues always of cost. So if, if it's built in based on rates primarily, then ratepayers, as a result of the program, somebody's going to have to pay for it. And that will mean every year, you know, some kind of additional annual cost that would go into the rates that customers are charged. So, so for those reasons, one has to be quite careful about setting up the program and making sure that the cost burden is, is not too great. You know, it could assist low-income, although Georgetown seems to say that they have to share in the cost too. Now, now, whether it might be a reduced cost, I, I seem to glean that from their testimony, that, you know, to make it equitable, kind of a rate system and non-discriminatory, that at least some cost would be built in with the low-income ratepayers. And that's the way it's done. I know with GTA and the other telecom companies, you know, the, the low-income ratepayer pays less, but, but still pays something. So it's, I believe, a very, kind of a tricky problem to set up this, this program and do it in a correct manner so that you don't have an undue rate impact for a large class of ratepayers. If, if you shift the cost primarily to all the other ratepayers, then, you know, that's by trying to be affordable to the low-income, in other words, you start to increase the rates to all the other classes. And it's just an important principle that I think the PUC and Georgetown felt, you know, should be considered by the legislature.
Okay. Another question. So what are the different classes? When you talk about classes, what are the different classes of ratepayers?
Oh, that's, that's like a residential, government, the large or ratepayer classes. I think military, I'm not sure. I'm actually not quite as familiar with some of GWA's rate classes as with GPA. But a broad, a broad range, you know, various commercial classes based on the size of the businesses. And so, yeah, in rate design, you know, rate design is another way of shifting these costs. And normally, in our, our rate systems now, the residential class is highly subsidized already. I mean, you have rate, the ratepayers from the government and the commercial, you know, large business, that they, they're paying higher rates than residential. So those are a part of the program here that can be built in, in terms of rate design. The, the PUC has done that on occasion, and actually has been modifying the rate design. In, in recent years, it seems that the commission has been trying to get away from so much subsidies that, you know, the, the other groups, for example, subsidize residential to that great an extent. But, but still, the subsidies are there. They have been reduced somewhat in recent years.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Hiraki. General Manager Bernalio, you, you had your hand raised, and probably this is the appropriate question for you. If you can discuss some of the, what are the different classes?
Oh, just, just to clarify, the rate classes that I think Mr. Hiraki was trying to describe, we have residential, we have three different classes of commercial rates, which are not necessarily based on the size of the government, but more on the usage type, the type of consumption, the type of business. And then we do have government and agriculture and irrigation rates. So those are the different rate classes. In, in terms of the various, there's, what was, what Mr. Hiraki described as an array of different ways to achieve what we're trying to achieve, the affordability and customer assistance program went hand-in-hand with our rate design, which Mr. Hiraki mentioned was another way of doing it. So the analytical study considered all those things. So what we've recommended in our customer assistance program and our rate design work hand-in-hand. And I think this is a good opportunity to clear up what might not have been accurately represented in Georgetown's testimony. The cost of the program is that we've proposed is not being, the total cost of the program does not result in a corresponding increase in rates. What we propose in the rate design, which Mr. Hiraki mentioned as a means for achieving a similar objective, is several components, but for the residential classes, it's moving, right now, our residential wastewater rate is a flat rate. So regardless of how much you use or how much you generate, you pay the same amount. So there is a cross-service kind of subsidy there. So part of the rate design is changing that to be a volumetric rate. So there's a So there's a base rate that that is determined by your meter size, so it's scaled. And then a volumetric rate for how much you use. And and on the water side, what we've done is the lifeline level right now is 5,000 gallons. What we've proposed, so it's the way it's structured, Senator, is 5,000 gallons. Everything below 5,000 gallons is a drastically reduced rate and everything above 5,000 gallons is more in line with the cost of service. Then the number 5,000 was arbitrarily picked. And so what we've done is adjust it to reflect more in line to more in line with what is recognized in these national organizations as a minimum amount necessary for health and sanitation at 3,000 gallons a month. So by reducing that, without doing anything else, that increases, that provides an additional revenue without increasing any of the the rates. And it's that type of rate design which helps to fund the 5.2 million dollars that we're talking about. So it's not 5.2 million means 5,000, 5 million in increase in rates. That's not necessarily a straight correlation. So that's something that may not be clearly stated in Georgetown's testimony, but it is clearly stated in the analytical study and in the package that we've submitted to the PUC. So we we do recognize that there are alternative ways and we are trying, we have tried to do that in what we've submitted. We also recognize that what has been previously identified in the Georgetown testimony as a potential grant source, the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program or LIWAP, that amount of funding for Guam, we would like to use to help fund this this program, the customer assistance program. However, I think what Guam received in that program was only about $91,000, which doesn't go a long way. We are hoping that the federal government permanizes that program and increase the funding amounts for the territories, which would certainly provide an ongoing basis to to fund this and sustain this customer assistance program. And we'll, you know, work our hardest to try and make sure that we avail of any grant funding opportunities to do that. So we do recognize and we did state in our discourse in the rate proceeding of our desire to use as much grant funding as possible to mitigate the the rate impact. So the last thing I want to say just about the rates is that it, we are not proposing a different rate for low income customers. The residential rate is the same as as a class. The only thing we're proposing is there is a benefit to income qualified customers within the class that can be applied, but not a different rate, just a discount. And so it's somewhat can be construed as semantics, but Georgetown has the has their opinion on this. And our financial consultant, who helped us design our customer assistance program and our rates, also has done this in various communities, including Atlanta and Detroit, I believe. These are a couple that were mentioned by him as examples of customer assistance program that he has personally worked on. And so the fact that more and more utilities in the nation are seeking this type of program and implementing it, especially to assist in their when they undertake large capital improvement programs to for for compliance issues like GWA is doing now. These programs have been effectively implemented and make sense and they they help the repairs.
All right. Thank you so much, General Manager Bredalio. So looking at the the breakdown of costs, so it looks like the, for me, the the most critical or the priority of the items would be leak detection and repair, which is about one fifth the cost. So is there a way to kind of prioritize that if we had a customer assistance program in place? Can that be prioritized? I think that would be probably the most essential thing out of all the items there. Or do all of them have to come, I mean, ideally, I would like to, you know, money go towards leak detection and repair?
This is, this is the breakdown that we have provided in in our rate package. And it assumes that we we would be approved for the full amount that was requested. If there there needed to be a adjustment to the amounts or the percentages of available funding that were applied. And, you know, prior prioritization of which services the cap would offer, we could, we could look at that in the in the implementation. These numbers just reflect what we estimate, what our estimates are. And I think once we get the program established and work through it for a year, obviously, we would come back and readjust some of these numbers because we might find that we need more of the funding to be applied towards one aspect of the program versus another.
So right now, GWA can still create a program based on the amount of money they're getting from grants? Is that something that GWA can can do at this time?
Well, at this time, we do not have a specific grant identified for some of this or for most of this. But we do have one grant that we've received as part of the AmeriCorps program, and maybe Chris can talk about that a little bit, which would assist us with the the water audit and water conservation.
Okay, so Chris, would you like to expound on that AmeriCorps grant at this time?
Sure. Our our AmeriCorps program is is designed for public outreach on a variety of of things within the authority. The one that that touches our customer assistance program is the the water audit. Those services actually will be available to all GWA customers. But for those that they go out and audit, do the audit at their residence, they'll be able to also inform them that if they are low income customers, that we have a program and then refer them to people within GWA to apply for it. And so that's part of, that's pretty much how the AmeriCorps program would do that. And then the audit would also help with the leak detection program as far as identifying whether they need fixtures at their residence that are, you know, for conserving water.
So no, no eligibility requirements at this time and it would have to be customer initiated?
No, so so we're implementing a program right now. When we get leak alerts from our water meters, we will be notifying all customers that they're, they have a leak alert with their meter. And so once we do that, we are going to, in addition, offer these water audit services. And so we're doing the outreach to the customer, then it would be, the customer would would have to then, you know, want us to come out and do the water audit and and help them in that way. But that that's how the, we're planning to to do it.
There is one other potential funding source here. I mean, the, if I recall correctly, Senator, the ARPA relief funding did have language which encouraged the application of some of that really funding for disadvantaged portions of the community and and low income segments of the community. So if the the grant funding that we, that has been committed to GWA to help with the rate mitigation comes with a condition to address low income customers, then it might be a potential grant funding source to be used to assist with this customer assistance program.
This is Massey. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, General Manager. So we do await your testimony and hopefully we can have a follow up discussion with the PUC. And perhaps, so do you think, sorry, one more question, do you think it's beneficial to wait for the rate case to be, I guess, finalized before? I guess that would help clarify on what to do at this point as far as legislation is concerned.
I think it would provide clarity. I think that the, you know, collaboration is important, I I will say, don't mean to contradict Mr. Hareki, but it's not really him I'm contradicting. But Georgetown has said that they would like to collaborate on on this, or at least that's what I thought I heard. But when we, in all of the discourse of the customer assistance program, no recommendations were made by Georgetown on how to improve it. But we're, we're happy to to have that type of collaboration if if that was to result, you know. Would I, the way I see it right now, Senator, that what we have, what you have written and what is the components of the customer assistance program as described align with what we have presented to the PUC. So hopefully, if everybody's pulling in the same direction, then we can get something implemented and continue dialogue with the PUC on this issue. And and with yourself is probably would be very beneficial.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Attorney Hareki, so in looking, I'm looking over the testimony from Georgetown consultants. So they didn't see any issues with GWA assisting on private property?
They they didn't really address that issue. The only concerns I I would have there, I mean, I think they're definitely liability issues, you know, when if if you place GWA in the position of being like a, you know, commercial company like a Barrett Plumbing or something. You know, when when you have them entering onto the private property, it it just, in terms of the services, you know, there there are legal liability issues if someone's injured, you know, those kinds of things. But also maybe about the service provided by GWA, you know, there there would be some legal or exposure issues there. There could be about the the work done and performed, you know, whether the low income customer was satisfied about it. But but I I think those issues need some more attention. And I, you know, can't say, I I don't think Georgetown looked at that too much. I thought about it a bit, but, you know, my understanding is just kind of a limited you know, liability situation when someone goes on to private property and and the things that could happen. But I I definitely think that is, it has to be, it has to be addressed and considered. What are the factors? You know, how how are those issues going to be dealt with? I mean, is is GWA providing some kind of warranty or guarantee for its work? And what what if the the customer is dissatisfied? Does that open any legal claims and otherwise? I mean, there's a whole panoply. I know I spoke to GPA's counsel about this and GPA is is pretty, how would I say it, more rigid about, you know, going on to the customer's side of the the meter, you know, GPA, at least Mr. Botha believed that, you know, they they are, they would be concerned about the liability issues. So they're very strict about only handling it on their side with the meter and then the customer dealing with every issue on the property. So there there are issues there, to be sure.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely my intent that there are going to be rules, you know, rules and regulations need to be created before the program is is implemented. Okay, I think those are my questions for now. I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues, Speaker Talahe. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you all for your testimony today. I have a couple of questions. So first of all, Mr. Bredalio, if you could clarify. So Georgetown is saying in their testimony that us passing this bill will result in a rate increase, potentially 5 million or 5%, I guess. Do you agree with that? Will the, will us passing this bill, if we accept your recommendation to change the word rate funded to grants or other, that other wording that you proposed, would this, would us passing this bill result in a rate increase or cause one?
I, based on the information that I've received and we've reviewed with our legal counsel, if the legislature with those amendments passes it, passes the bill into law and the governor signs it into law, then we we would, it would create a requirement for us to establish the program. But it would not be funded unless GWA recognized or was provided a source of funding either through grants or through rate relief. The recommendation that we made on the language would preserve the PUC's rate making authority. And they would then decide whether it was reasonable and prudent for us to establish the program and provide the funding for it. In terms of Georgetown's statement about the cost of the program and a corresponding equivalent rate increase, as I stated previously, our rate design would allow for a portion of the program costs to be generated without changing rates, but just changing the rate design, without raising rates, but just changing the rate design. So it's not entirely correct to say that establishing the customer assistance program will raise rates by the equivalent amount of the program expense.
Right. And if you could just clarify, your rate design, it sounds like it's a new rate design. Is that, is that what's being proposed in DOcket 1908? Or is that some other rate design that you've, you're working on or is already approved?
It is not approved. It is part of DOcket 1908, as is the customer assistance program and and many other issues that we were asked to look at by the PUC. They're all contained in the latest filing in DOcket 1908.
All right. And so from what you're describing right now about how you might use grants or others, it seems like you're not mandated to use a certain amount. It would still be within your discretion to use what amounts, amounts you're able to obtain either through grants or through through PUC approved rates. Is that right?
Based on how it's currently written with those amendments, I believe that to be correct, yes.
Okay, and and the part of the bill that says a volumetric discount for water and wastewater, that's the word, I guess, that you stand by this word, a volumetric discount versus saying anything about rates, right? And and does this meet, does this sentence meet the that part of Georgetown's testimony where they say that all residential or retail customers should pay for this? Under, if we use this language, a volumetric discount for water and wastewater services, does that still mean that all residential or retail customers are paying, retail customers, they use the word retail, are all retail customers paying for this service? Hey, hey, what do they say? They said?
Sorry, the sentence that you described, the volumetric discount on the rates, the volumetric part applies to the the part of our tariff, which is based on the more you use, the amount that you use, there's that variable charge, right? Based on how much you use. Then there's the fixed portion of the the rate, your your base service charge. So the volumetric, the the discount would only be applied to the amount of water you use, not your base charge. That's what that sentence is saying. But the the fact that the discount is applied only to qualified, income qualified customers means that all residential customers have the same tariff, but only the only the discount is applied to income qualified. So there isn't a separate rate for low income customer, residential customers versus residential customers. And I think that's the distinction. And when it's phrased that way, and this is the part I referred to as perhaps more semantic, when it's phrased that way, we don't believe it infringes on the, what the PUC
Rate authority.
Yeah.
Okay. What about who pays for, right now, so I agree with the intention of this bill very much so. And I I agree with your statement that I think this is the time where people who need it the most, hopefully, we can grant some assistance and and resolve the problems for the long term. This leak detection and repair and allowing them to stay on as customers, right? Hopefully, that's the whole goal. Instead of losing them as customers, there, you will never be able to pay off this, you know, the continued excess fees, excessive fees or, or, you know, large fees based on leaks and things like that. So right now, yeah, what, how would you describe like right now, who pays for that? So right now, yeah, what, how would you describe like right now, who pays for that? It's, it seems to me like a trade-off, right? We're gonna, we're gonna help them through assisting them versus paying these bills ourselves because they are completely unable. Is that correct? Like, who pays for that, that when when not, when the customers themselves are not able to fix these things or or pay for the large bills in the end?
So there's the cost of what is uncollected in in terms of their bill that they don't pay. And then there's the cost to try and collect it, which is additional effort and resources on our part. And then if 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 it isn't collected, in addition to all that cost, then we end up writing it off and those expenses get spread across every rate class, so everybody's paying for it anyway. What we're trying to do here is minimize that amount, keep them as customers, which improves the chances that they will continue to, you know, even if they have, you know, occasional run-ups of their bill, they will continue to pay them off, even if it's with a payment plan. That's better than them facing disconnection and then it becomes uncollectible and then either they don't come back for service or some, you know, somebody else applies for service and we we still don't have a means to to collect it.
Right, yes. Yeah, I'm hoping that that what you described will resolve some of these longstanding problems that we we see in the end, right? But can you just describe again, in the nineteen oh eight docket, is there a, is there a proposal in there to change the LEAP? Or only to to implement a customer assistance program?
So the the, if you're talking about in Georgetown's testimony, what they describe as LEAP?
Yes.
Some assistance program, I think that is synonymous with our customer assistance program. So that's their term, it's not ours. Our our term, as we've presented it to the PUC in the rate package, is a customer assistance program which goes along with our rate design.
So you're proposing actually to change the lifeline rate and and implement a customer assistance program in the PUC docket, right?
So we we are changing the threshold of the lifeline rate.
Right, okay, the rate is the same, but the threshold is different. Okay, thank you. And and I want to thank you all. I I just wanted to point out, I want to thank you because I think Mr. Bredasi testified about the the leak alerts to the customer and the inspection and assessment that's actually ongoing right now. I remember being in a public hearing not too long ago, maybe in the last term, where this was a huge issue and that you promised that you were going to implement a program that was going to help these customers, especially by alerting them. And so I want to thank you for having that ready to go or implemented already, in fact, and and creative use of a very core, an American grant. Okay, I think I have one more question, Madam Chair. Sorry if I could just look. It was. Oh, yes. Do you believe we need to put a a cap on this cap program, customer assistance program, or that we allow GWA to discretion to to use what they have to assist? And if they don't have, or they're not able to, you know, obtain it in any way, a grant or, you know, rates, a structure, then they just can't assist?
So we are not, contrary to what has been said in the GCC testimony, there's no veiled attempt at anything here. We we are trying to assist the customer and we do believe in transparency and if the, if placing a cap on it is a means by which the the PUC will feel comfortable with us moving forward with the program. I'm sure the PUC also, they've been very fair with GWA in reevaluating even what we submit as budgets through the annual true-up process and, you know, we understand that the the program as we started will have some quirks that we need to work out and can always be improved. And through that type of true-up process and reevaluation, we could look at any caps that are implemented and make recommendations and so far, it's been my experience for the most part that the PUC is the PUC is very reasonable in working with GWA. I can't say the same thing about their consultants, but I know Mr. Hareki and the Commission are very reasonable with us.
Thank you. And Mr. Hareki, if you could just clarify your role, you are the ALJ Administrative Law Judge. Is that, is that for GWA?
Okay, I'm I'm an administrative, yeah, Chief Administrative Law Judge. Actually, I I handle primarily telecom, GPA, and solid waste, but on occasion, I do do work for GWA. So in the first phase of docket nineteen oh eight, I was the ALJ. The the one that, you know, basically looked at the the rates for FY twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And I made a recommendation to the PUC in that matter. And that's, that's the one that GM Bordalio referred to, which required GWA to submit its affordability studies and the six other studies. So I I do have familiarity with with GWA. In prior years, maybe going back eight or 10 years, yeah, I've handled other rate cases and and various things for GWA also.
All right, and when would you estimate that the docket decision will be made or we can expect that?
You know, that's, that's hard to say, but I've I've heard, I I have to characterize them as rumors that it will be relatively soon, maybe within a week or two.
Okay, and
That's, that's what I've heard, but I I I can't say whether that's correct or not.
Okay, and if you could just clarify, so Georgetown Consultant works for the PUC or for the ALJ? Who who are they, who's their client?
For the PUC. So so every five years, the PUC retains consultants for the different utilities. And so Georgetown, Georgetown goes way back. For many years, they were the only consultant at the PUC.
I remember, I know.
For many years, but but now, for example, for water and power, we have, let's see, actually, three different consultants, although I have to say Georgetown has primarily handled water, but we have power consultants. And they they are hired by the PUC every five years, normally on a consultant basis.
All right, and then there's portions of Georgetown's testimony that talks about, well, they admit that portions of the consumer assistance program or customer assistance program would require legislative approval. And then another, another place, yeah, they talk about this legislative approval, so. You know, wouldn't it be, I guess, consistent for us to pass or provide whatever approval might be necessary at this point and instead of waiting? Well, we could, we can wait for the decision if it's a week. But let's say it's longer than that to to simultaneously provide the approval that is necessary.
You know, this matter hasn't been before the Commission yet, but first of all, we don't know how many issues will be addressed there or what will be provided in terms of a customer assistance program, but I think it would likely take longer and probably, what what the PUC would ordinarily do, I know what it did with the lifeline rates for telecom companies, is we would establish a docket with the goal of coming up exactly what legislative authorizations would be necessary to provide the program. And and Georgetown, I believe, with with GTA actually worked on the legislation or helped, you know, develop exactly what would be needed. But but the problem with just doing something now, you know, it it may or may not properly address what needs to be done. I I was encouraged by GM Bordalio's statements about, you know, kind of changing it from just rate funded necessarily to recognizing the, you know, the role of the PUC, because theoretically, I mean, the PUC should be involved in every aspect of this, you know, whether the program's required, you know, what rates would fund it, e- even aspects potentially of what discounts are being given. I I I think those need to be looked at as broad, they're all rate issues to some extent. And of course, the PUC is believes based on its history and and organic act creation, as you know, that that it's supposed to be very involved in all of those issues, so. Just the decision itself, that it may or may not answer questions, all the questions, it may answer some of them. But I think the longer range participation, I mean, the PUC would certainly be willing. It's it's always open to setting up a docket, a separate docket, not just in the rate case, but specifically on the customer assistance program and and trying to work out all the details of what would be needed. And from what I could gather, I know the relations haven't always been greatest between Georgetown and and the water authority, but they have a lot of experience in developing these kinds of programs and developing the legislation, so. It it might even be that a little longer range. And I understand the legislature wants to to take some action, but Georgetown pointed out in its testimony too, you know, that sometimes initially you don't know all the issues that are going to come up with the program or what what authority or authorization is needed. So so it might, I mean, if you did something now or fairly soon, you know, that could be a piece, but it might then be that there are all kinds of other things that could be done or should be done that that would require going back to the legislature. So I don't know, maybe a more comprehensive approach might be well, the docket approach, I I I like that one because it takes longer, obviously, but but it really gives the time to to carefully consider a program like this.
Well, I appreciate that, and I I will take that into consideration, but I, you know, I'm thinking that, yeah, the intent of the bill is to to assist GWA in assisting customers immediately, right? Instead of waiting and waiting and it seems like if they can do that without mandating a rate increase and, you know, working in ways to prevent that or to avoid that and and that they could actually provide this assistance. And, you know, we've seen the cases and we're still dealing with those as well here, right? Where they are calling our offices because they get into that cycle and I really feel for them when they are in that cycle. And I think the timing of the bill is 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 good, you know, it it's now. So if there's an expedited way that PUC, if they want to take a look at that, can do it, you know, then then, you know, maybe that's something to consider. But but I am all in favor of something as as fast as we can, just to authorize them without binding them and without binding rate payers, you know, without PUC's involvement. I don't think anybody's trying to do that here, and so I appreciate the suggested amendments to the bill and, but that's, yeah, I guess that I I still feel for that, that if we can stop that cycle, keep these customers on as paying customers as opposed to, you know, we are they are, they are really feeling the pressure. I mean, and I'm telling you, I've heard it from so many people, so many people just are floored by some, you know, one bill soars up and they can't catch up after that. It's 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 normally from a leak or something else, but so all the programs together, I'm sure are going to work for this, but thank you again to you, Mr. Hareki and Attorney Hareki, Mr. Bredalio.
I I have a couple of of suggestions. I I still believe that there will be a rate impact. You know, if this program is authorized, that it's just very unlikely.
Well, there won't be.
How much it will be, we don't know. But if if you're talking about legislation, that would be a general authorization for Water Works, but I I think where the PUC would have concerns and issues, for example, mandating it that it be rate funded, that that seems problematic to the PUC.
Right, but we've already discussed changing that.
If you change that, that's a good idea. And following some of Mr. Bordalio's suggestions, he had good suggestions about modifying it just to recognize that we, the PUC sets the rates and then I I think, you know.
I am finding that Mr. Bredalio is being, that he is acknowledging that and he is recommending that we continue that and that he's not asking we go around that in any way. So that's why I am, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing that we should all be able to work together on this and and expedite it as as much as we can. So thank you and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Speaker Talahe. Senator Teloty Taitagui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator Sabina Flores-Perez. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for being here today, too. General Manager Bredalio, with regards to GWA submitting, did they submit what's called Document nineteen zero eight to the PUC? Is that what the discussion, because there's two things here when I'm reading and I'm sorry, I I didn't read through the whole Georgetown review, but docket nineteen zero eight, is it similar to Bill, this bill that we're looking at, Bill two two six?
Docket nineteen zero eight is the PUC docket for GWA's rate case, our five-year financial plan, which was, an order was issued by the PUC for the first two years of that five-year period and we are, we've currently submitted a rate package for the final three years in accordance with the PUC's previous order. And that is the, there's a pending decision by the PUC on that filing for this docket.
I see. And and the the docket itself, okay, five year and then two years and now you're on three years to submit, it's, does it require some kind of you know, solutions or assistance to the public? Is there something in there that just is that why the CAP is is in there?
So the the February twenty twenty order on docket nineteen oh eight from the PUC, which was crafted by Mr. Hareki, included a requirement that GWA develop a customer assistance program and complete an affordability analytical study, which we, which we did, and the customer assistance program and the rate design are included in that analytical study, which was submitted on March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
I see, last year, okay. So it's actually something from PUC, PUC requesting for you to do then, right? Okay, and now we're at at this juncture right here. And then, um, so, okay, understanding a little bit more of this, I, again, I didn't read the Georgetown Consulting Group completely, just some of the comments that it made. And one of my biggest concerns too in this, what I did glance at was that it was an unfunded mandate and that that's that's concerning to me, anything that's unfunded. We we talk about that on the federal side, you know, and that's something that I don't want to put into place here on on legislation on Guam. So you you talked about the, you know, everyone seems to pay anyways when it comes to the the write-off on on bills that cannot be paid by individuals or they have to get off the line, the the water line because they can't pay their bill and becomes very difficult and now Water Works has to write it off. And it's, you said it's written off to a point where GWA still has to pay for it. So there seems to me there's some kind of mathematics involved in here. So you you take at the end of the year, how much of water has lost or has not been able to be paid for and it's technically has to be, you know, placed back in somewhere, you know, it's not like it's free, right? You have to pay for this somehow. What is that? I mean, at the end of the year, do you determine you know, that volume of amount that was never paid for and how do you incorporate it into the rates?
So the, our current process is we attempt to work with the customer to keep, keep their accounts, put them on a payment plan to pay off any accumulated bills. And if they can do that, they stay on as a customer. If they can't do that, then they send, if, and they face disconnection, sometimes they they are disconnected. And the portions of their bill, the outstanding portions of their bill, they don't pay, but we keep them on the books as a receivable. After a certain amount of time, we try to make, we continue to try to collect from them and that is an expense to us. And then at some point, we refer them to a collection service, which if they are successful in collecting, then, you know, a certain percentage of that is is lost and we don't recover it. And then ultimately, if the, if it's uncollectible, then we accumulate, the CFO accumulates. then we, the CFO accumulates what she is recommending to be written off as bad debt. And that goes before the CCU and they have to approve the write-off. And I would just say, I think just last night, we discussed, our current AR aging report shows for residential customers over 120 days, the difference between active accounts over 120 days and active plus inactive accounts over 120 days is about 3.8 million dollars. So that would give you an indication of, on our current books, what the receivables are that are likely to be uncollectible.
3.8 million annually, is that annually?
We don't write off annual, I think it's every couple of years. I'm just giving you the snapshot of what it is.
Okay, so it's by annual, not by annual, but every couple of years, okay, two years. I hear it saying in this docket that it's going to be a rating, it's going to be about 5.2 million dollars annually if we were to move in this direction and create this account. You know, for me, I think the legislation, if it just creates the program itself, not the account, I'm sorry, if it creates the cap program, you know, and puts it into place and then allows any grant opportunities or any federal source funding that comes in to use that funding for that. You know, I definitely, wholeheartedly will support this bill because it's definitely not going to be paying Peter to pay Paul, you know, take from John to pay Paul, Paul to pay Peter, you know, scenario here. And a lot of people who ensure that their lines on the private side are being taken care of. And when there's ever a leak that's going on, they do their due diligence to, you know, hire someone to come in and fix it right away, you know. For those who don't, or, you know, just neglect these important lines and we're supposed to say it's okay, you know, just neglect it, you know, because Water Works is going to come and fix it. That's another question I have with regards to Water Works coming into, is that the plan? Or you hire someone else to come in to fix these leaks on the residential private side of it? Do you have in-house, in-house people doing it, or do you have to contract out?
So the way we envision it is if, we have seen several instances where the piping is leaking, but it's between the meter and the structure. And in those instances, it's easy enough for our crews to go out and make those minor repairs. That's something that we do all the time. So it doesn't necessarily require a whole lot more expertise or resources than we already have. But work inside the house, the intent was to provide a, kind of like a voucher, a credit amount that could be paid by GWA, by whoever the customer hires to do that type of plumbing inside the house. And that kind of would address some of the liability issues that Mr. Hareki identified previously. But that was our intent and we would move forward with that as our primary option. Of course, we'd be open to discussing other options.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that there is some type of services right now that you provide. And I think maybe that's that one, you talked about grant funding for $91,000 that you have on the books. And of course, Mericor program, you know, servicing there. There are programs within that's kind of helping the way. But I think something like this will be very helpful and understandably. But I'm concerned about, you know, again, you know, providing the service at the expense of others who are responsible, you know, and that might be an issue. So the docket, pay for it first, okay, there's no real math on it. Okay, a lot of my questions were asked earlier, too, and I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Hareki, for being here as always, you know, it's very helpful. And I promise I will read this, this report from the Georgetown group. And Mr. Dubiassi, always good to see you as well. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Joanne Brown, if you have any questions or comments at this time, you're recognized.
Very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. You know, I see the challenge on both sides of this issue. Of course, I think we're all aware of the media reports on an elderly lady that, you know, may have, I don't know the specifics, other than what was reported, perhaps a water leak that perhaps ran for a significant amount of time and that she ended up with a fairly high water bill. And I'm sure there's circumstances where that may occur. But at the same time, I also don't like the idea that we continue to penalize people who actually pay their bills and do the responsible thing. You know, if you have infrastructure, you have a home, you have, you know, power lines that come into your home and your private property, your water lines. There is an expectation that when it comes to private property, that becomes a personal responsibility. I understand the objective of this bill. I'm very cautious to what degree I want government in our lives. You know, where does it begin and end? And then where do we hold, you know, the responsibility of utility? And how far do they have to continue to do the work beyond what should be their jurisdiction of responsibility? I don't see anyone here testifying that's a private contractor that provides these type of services or plumbing services because I'm also kind of concerned from their perspective on are we taking private business and their ability to work and survive? You know, because that's what they do. They do these type of repairs. And I mean, if I have an issue on my side of the property lines, then, you know, I call a plumber to come in and address those repairs. So I'm just a little cautious about that. I understand the intent and what it is we would like to see. But of course, I'm going to want to know who pays for it. I don't want rate payers that have been responsible in paying their bills to be further burdened with any unnecessary costs, no matter how, you know, the best of intentions, we continue to penalize those in our community that actually are responsible and pay their bills. And when we created the CCU, when we took the oversight of rates for both the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority, and I guess probably I can say that because I don't know if there's any other member of the current legislation that was there when we did this. The intent was to de-politicize, hopefully, to the large degree, de-politicize the operations of the utilities. Because politically, of course, it's very popular to want to reduce rates. It's very popular to want the government to provide, you know, all these other services so that individually, you know, we don't have to pay for it. Same thing with trash collection. It was such a controversy, I remember when DPW came out and said, you have to standardize your trash cans for collection because we need this order to be collect, you know, be able to load the trucks and all that. And it was just total negative feedback. It was only when, of course, the whole, you know, solid waste issue went under the federal court and then the orders came down and there wasn't choice, so we actually addressed compliance. So I am cautious about that. And I did want to ask, I don't know whether the representatives from the PUC can relay a response to this, or Mr. Bordalio from GWA. I understand the desire for more dialogue, there's probably need to do that because certainly if there's a way to do this without further burdening the rate payers and yet be able to assist those that are in most need. You know, if there's a way to do that, I'd love to do it. But I'm concerned if we're mandating it and then, you know, putting it on your back, so to speak, or GWA and the rate payers to have to fund this. And then again, like I said, I'm a little concerned about to what degree do we get involved in private property matters and have that become a government liability that further burdens the rest of our community? So maybe, Mr. Bordalio, if you could be first to respond to that?
Yeah, so the, there are several factors that play into GWA's position on this. So our development of the customer assistance program, as I mentioned previously, was part of the rate order, so we had to do that, provide the analytical study. But the national movement towards affordability programs and their interrelation with compliance requirements under US EPA's Clean Water Act and Safe Drinking Water Act and consent decrees associated with that and compliance requirements, that the interaction of affordability programs and the ability to secure flexible scheduling for achieving those compliance requirements, those things are tied together. And in part, GWA supports having the customer assistance program as an affordability measure in order to facilitate our reducing the impact to all the customers that would result from a shortened or compressed timeframe to achieve compliance requirements. So if we have a customer affordability program in place, we are more likely to get flexible schedule. So as opposed to a 10-year timeframe to complete millions and millions of dollars of compliance requirements, we would have 20 years, for example. Anything we could do to help that, we feel is responsible on our part. And that's part of the reason of wanting to do this. It's, as I mentioned, part of our, started with our overall 2018 20-year master plan. And it was a recommendation that was included then. And we've been systematically trying to research and develop an appropriate customer affordability program in order to meet the objectives that were stated in that financial plan. So we view it comprehensively as a good thing. We understand the concerns about taking on a responsibility for what should be a private homeowner. But we would remind the senators that the intention is not to do this for everybody. And the intention is only to do it for people who currently don't do it and because they can't afford it. And so, you know, to limit impacts to them, but also to limit impacts to us.
And who's going to pay for that? Is that going to be, who's going to pay for that? Because if it's coming out of GWA pockets, it's coming out of rate payer pockets unless these grants or the things you mentioned, what options are being looked at? Or is it going to be the rate payers of Guam that's going to pay for it? I understand the balance that either way, whatever you do is going to cost, right? I appreciate all that you're talking about with regards to EPA compliance. But who's going to pay for it?
The, so currently, everybody pays for the water that we can't collect on. So that's spread out. The way we view this is, this is a different type of expense that would help prevent that type of expense. So does it end up costing the entire system anymore? We're trying to achieve that balance. And we think with grant funding, the more that we can reduce the amount that it would cost the rate payers, the better off we'll be. So we, again, as I mentioned, will work hard to try and maximize the amount of grant dollars that we can obtain so that it doesn't cost the rate payers anything.
And for the rate payer assistance, do you already have defined what the qualifications are for that? Of who is eligible and an idea of how many rate payers we may be talking about?
Yeah, so one of the issues that was raised in the Georgetown comments was that it would be creating another level of bureaucracy and administrative function for GWA. We don't agree with that because we are working cooperatively with other government agencies that already do income-based qualifications and using the same criteria. We would just use their data to establish eligibility and that would be, would reduce the administrative burden.
And the work would be done by GWA? It would be done, again, I don't see anyone from the private sector that is in this line of work, providing testimony in terms of how they feel about GWA. You know, essentially going into their area where they would be the ones and they make a living doing it. I mean, we certainly want to encourage private business and entrepreneurship in our community who provide this type of work. But now, because again, I understand that there are people out there who don't have the means to be able to pay for it. But now to have the government be the one to intercede, I mean, are you going to do the work? Or are you going to contract it out to private contractors to perform the work for GWA?
I think our intent is to create a balance of, if it's outside the residence, outside the structure, but between the meter on private property, for example, in the yard, that's something that GWA can easily do with in-house resources at not a lot of expense. If it's inside the house, then we would use a voucher system to cover the cost, portion of the cost for whatever private contractor the homeowner would hire to do the work inside the house. That's the intent. Again, in this specific instance, the customers we are targeting are the ones that aren't doing this anyway right now. So there isn't a detriment, I think, to private contractors who provide the service. It might actually be a benefit because these are jobs that currently aren't being done because they don't have the money to do it.
Well, and I see it a little differently. If you're going to provide vouchers for private contractors to do it versus the government doing it, then that would maybe offset my concern with regards to us, you know, getting into the territory, so to speak, of work that we would expect private contractors to do. Is this something that you've already put in? Is this plan already in place or is this being proposed? Or at what stage, what stage is this whole process at?
So we've proposed the broad outlines of the program. We know that there's a little more work that needs to be done to tighten it up. And that's why in our recommended changes, we've asked for a time period certain after funding is achieved in order for us to finalize all that and implement it. So they're still done on some of this stuff.
Well, it would be good when it is completed for us to be able to see it. Is this legislation needed? Or is this something that you were able to do under your current laws and authorities with the PUC to put in place? Is it necessary for us to legislate it? If it sounds like you're already going down this road, is there anything legally that requires us to have to address this further from the legislature to intercede?
In our, in our analytical study and also in our submission to the PUC, we addressed the legal issue of whether separate legislation is required for this. Our counsel, who researched it, issued an opinion that said that no further legislation was necessary. However, kind of contrary to what is, I can't tell if it's contrary to Georgetown's position or not because in the beginning, they say there shouldn't be legislation. And then they say, well, some legislation should be required. But in our dialogue with them during the discovery process and the rate proceeding, they are the ones who said having legislation similar to what GTA has done for their customer assistance program would be beneficial. And so we didn't see this as necessarily, we didn't see it as necessary in order to implement the program. But if the PUC's consultant is saying that it was done on the GTA side and that went through with no problems, then we view this legislation as potentially supportive of our efforts in there. To be honest, I'm a little bit confused as to why Georgetown is saying, no, it's not required.
I'm beginning to get clarification. I don't see any reason why they can't provide it. I mean, they get the big bucks to provide that advice because we also gave quite broad authorities, you know, to the utilities under CCU to operate, almost to the expectation that you would not be coming back to us with anything rate-related. Because, as I mentioned, having been there at the time, we addressed and the creation of CCU and the independence of autonomy that we hope to give the autonomous agencies. Because prior to that, everything is very politicized. Who got hired, you know, whose water line got put in where? I mean, that, and how much people were going to pay or not pay was that, you know, that decision got made at the legislature. And I think we all knew where that went, that was helping drive our utilities into the ground and ultimately to a greater cost and detriment to our public who had to suffer as a result of that. So that's the reason why I'm asking. I mean, GTA to me is a total separate issue. It's a private company now, it's not a government entity. So I wouldn't look at it or want to piggyback with regards to it. But I think it would be helpful also to get further clarification because I don't want to continue the idea unless there's some major change of policy that we, again, begin to put ourselves in a situation of interceding with regards to rate-related issues. Because I think we've seen where all that has led us in the past. I certainly would not want to see us go that way in the future. The hope that when these decisions were being made with regards to rates, that they were the best decisions that were being made with regards to the operations of the utility. And of course, trying to provide the best price possible to our rate payers out there so that we know what money we're investing is being spent properly and not being misused as it has been so frequently with such ease in the past. So I think it would be good, there's no reason we can't ask Georgetown. They've been players on Guam for a long time at the PUC to provide clarification with regards to that, so that we have a reading. I mean, otherwise, it's nice that we can say, hey, we passed the bill. And I certainly give the author, Senator Sabina, credit for bringing this issue forth. I just, I just don't want this to be the trend that we intercede because it was a hope that we would not have to do things like this with regards to rates. So with that, unless there's anyone from the PUC has any further comments? Mr. Hareki, do you have any comments with regards to this issue?
Not particularly. I think you voiced some of the concerns that Georgetown has. And, you know, a lot of these issues take up quite a bit of thought. For example, you mentioned, who does GWA use to do the repairs? I mean, these are all kinds of things that you could, you could put in applicable rules and regulations that could be done between GWA and PUC. And at the time, I think that the lifeline rates were initiated with GTA. It was a, I believe it was a government entity. Now, they all had rules and regulations. So I think Mr. Bordalio is correct, some things like the eligibility, there are a lot of standards for that, for, you know, who is low income? I mean, it's based on income, eligibility for subsidized housing, receipt of SNAP benefits, all those things are worked in. And they can all be determined. But each of those issues, this is rather a complicated overall process. And that's why I like the idea of, I mentioned earlier, creating a separate. And that's why I like the idea of, I mentioned earlier, creating a separate docket at the PUC where we could specifically just focus on, you know, what is needed to, to make a viable program here. And, and so to the extent possible, it's done without imposing an adverse rate impact on, on the non-low income groups. And that, that's, that's definitely a concern. So that, that all I would have to add on that.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate your input, and, and you're right. I mean, I appreciate the fact, also, it's Mr. Baudal you relayed that, you, you know, GW is looking at the other criteria that's already in place for low income. So GW is not having to reinvent the wheel in terms of defining or identifying who those individuals are. And then by all means, to have the least amount of impact upon the rate payers. Because I consistently, you know, I'm concerned that the, not, I can't say responsible because if you're able to afford to pay for it, then you know that, that's something to be appreciative of. If we can afford to pay for these type of repairs. But at the same time, you know, there are many people out there that are also just getting by, that can afford, that are middle-income families that, you know, of course, a few hundred dollars, a thousand plus that some of these repairs can go are a major impact. A lot of people live on a fixed income, you know, not everybody's wealthy. And even those that may not, not be eligible for this, you know, they're just making it by. They're just above the line, just making it by, and I certainly don't want to burden them any more than necessary with regards to, with regards to rate increases if they're not necessary. So it'd be good, good to get clarification. I mean, if this can be done without legislation, so much the better, because I'd like to see the rate-making process be independent of, of the Guam Legislature. Just because the sins of the past are so real, and the consequences to the utilities were, were of concern. It doesn't mean that, you know, we just let you guys go and do whatever you want. I'm certainly going to keep an eye, as I've always, on, on decisions that are being made by the PUC to make sure that they're the best and, and most responsible decisions. And I hope also, you know, if, if what they're in the criteria, that we're making sure that the individual that's receiving the benefit actually is the owner of the property. I would not want somebody renting a property and then we're going in there and providing this benefit because the individual renting may be of low income. But you know, there's a landlord that owns that property. So things like that, to make sure there's no abuse. Because trust me, there was always somebody out there that's trying to find a way around the system. If they can shortcut, they're going to try and do it. But those are the kind of things I hope that you look at when, when the plan is finished and, and flushed through. At least provide it to us and to the public so that everyone knows what their criteria. And whenever possible, if the work is being done on the private side of the, of the property line, so to speak, if that can be given to the private sector, to those that are in the business of doing this because they pay taxes, I, I would be more open to doing that. If you have other sources of funding, there are grants and other things, wonderful. If it minimizes the cost overall, that's another benefit. Because I understand, Mr. Baudal, what you're talking about is you don't, you don't pay the cost in one end, but you're paying in the other of, you know, maybe the more water that's being wasted, you know, in the system because of the leakage and, and concerns of that. Because I know you have a lot to, a lot to juggle from your, your vantage point. But those are the, you know, comments and concerns I have with regards to this issue. And if we can maximize this without interceding at the Guam Legislature, that would be my, my preference. But thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Herrecki, Mr. Baudal, and everyone else here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment and, and ask questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tadic, we had a follow-up question?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Baudalio, Guam Land Trust Commission, or the land recipients of Tomorrow Land Trust, are there any assistance programs for those, or they are considered the same as everyone else? When it comes, you know, residential? Are there any programs for them?
There is no separate program proposed for, for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a real quick question.
All right. Thank you so much for, for everyone's presentation or testimony here today. And basically, Bill 266-36 was, was created to address some of the issues regarding with the the large increases in water bills due to lack of prompt response to, or delayed response to water leaks on private property. And I do appreciate everyone's testimony, and we'll definitely take that into consideration. And also, we look forward to the testimony from GWA as well as the, the rate case. Like to see what the outcome is of that. And we can then regroup and have more discussions on this bill. All right. Thank you so much for your time. So Bill 266-2036 is duly heard. And now on to the second item of, agenda item for this public hearing. It's Bill Number 267-36COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and Senator Talat Taitikwe. It's enacted in Section 13103 and 13104, all of Article 1, Chapter 13, Division 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, and to men Section 2121 to Article 1, Chapter 2 of Title 28, Guam Administrative Roles and Regulations Relative to Establishing Fair Process Resolving Rate Pair Disputes. Notices were sent to the PUC, CCU, Guam Water Works Authority, and Guam Power Authority. We received a fiscal note waiver for the reason that the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any funds of the government of Guam. At this time, we have not received any written testimonies, but I believe GPA will be sending theirs. And so I'd like to provide some introductory comments prior to receiving any testimony at this time. So Bill 267-36, sponsored by myself and Senator Talat Taitikwe, aims to create a fair billing practices for utilities. Currently, the law requires a deposit to be placed in escrow before billing dispute can be given a hearing. Additionally, should the dispute be resolved in favor of the utility, the rate payer would have to pay a 9% interest plus the amount in escrow to the utility. Conversely, should the dispute be resolved in favor of the rate payer, the utility would have to pay the amount in escrow plus 9% interest to the rate payer. Bill 267-36 aims to repeal outdated unfair billing practices that could potentially pose a barrier to rate payers or seeking prompt resolution of an issue, which can be symptomatic of leaks or improper functioning meters, or some other issues when unaddressed can, can result in unexpected financial burden. It can also jeopardize access, continued access to water and/or power. Discussing the Bill 267-36 upon introduction, it is a relief that utilities are not using this outdated practice. However, it's important that our laws are in step with fair billing practices and do not pose barriers to access to our vital utilities. So I believe we have General Manager Baudalio, so thank you for staying on. And if you, you're recognized if you'd like to provide any, any testimony.
If Chris is still on, I think I would defer to Assistant General Manager Chris Padasi to, to discuss the comments that GWA has for this bill, since he is responsible for the customer service role at the, at the authority. But if he's not on, I can just state that the bill does not seem to be out of line with what our, our current practice is. The term deposit, as it is defined in the existing statute, is a little bit misleading. Essentially, what we ask when the customer disputes a bill is not that he make a separate deposit or additional deposit. It's simply that he, the customer, if they dis, if they dispute a high bill during a certain billing period, that they just pay what they would normally pay. And then the deposit amount, I think it's, as it's defined, tries to cover a three-month average of a customer's bill, which is essentially the same thing that we're doing now. So I, I don't, I think it's just a little bit misleading in, in terms of the definition and the term deposit in how it's used. But in order for, to avoid disconnection, we simply ask that the customer pay their normal bill while we look at the, the facts surrounding the dispute until it's resolved. And I, I, I don't believe that when we, we offer the payment plans, if, if it turns out to be in our favor, we do offer the payment plans as a means to assist the customer in spreading out those payments, so it's not so much of a burden. But we, I don't believe we, we are assessing the interest that, that is listed in the existing statute.
All right. Thank you for that, and I believe you'll be sending in written testimony to support.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Chris, I'm sorry if you weren't around just on 267. If you had any additional comments to make, I kind of went over our existing practice, but maybe you wanted.
Okay.
Recognize, Chris, Chris.
Thanks. So I'm sure Miguel covered this already, but, you know, our existing practice is just to request that the customer make their average payment that they would normally make when there's a bill dispute. And so, you know, we're not currently following the escrow and all of the, as far as a deposit goes. The deposit is, is the payment that they're making, which is their normal monthly average cost, which I think is represented in the bill to be an average of, I wasn't, if it was three months, if I'm not mistaken. And we think that that's reasonable while we investigate what the issue is, that at least they're making the, the payments that they've made in the previous months, following up to the, to the disputed amount.
Thank you so much, Chris. Will you be providing written testimony as well?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, I don't have any questions. So I'd just like to open the floor to my colleague, Senator Taitikwe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for addressing this, especially General Manager, Assistant General Manager. I appreciate your, your comments, and actually, I appreciate that you're providing that leniency, you know, for those who have a difficult time with paying it, or even, you know, just concerns of their with their issues with their power, power, I'm sorry, with their water bill, and feeling that they have done nothing wrong. I mean, I've heard there are times they come to GWA and they've been given a lot of compassion by the staff there. So I appreciate that as well, as they're going through something like this. But now, other than that, appreciate your support on this measure, and I thank the sponsor for allowing me to co-sponsor in this. Thank you. We're just cleaning it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitikwe. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm just going to ask the same question. Is this something that the utility is able to address on its own with regards to, you know, it's addressing these disputes with regards to billing? Or is it something that you need legislation to address? I can ask Mr. Baudalio that question.
Miguel, you're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I, I think we are addressing the disputes processes as a regular matter, of course, for administrative processes and procedures. Again, I think, is, is this legislation necessary? No, but it, it might not be, but it would, if, if it brings the statute to be more aligned with our current practice, then I think we would welcome that. So the, the deletion of the interest payments, which is something that we are not currently practicing, and especially in the current times, would be more of a burden to rate payers. Then we would agree with its elimination. If it was decided that it needed to be kept, we think it, it is a bit outdated, and we might align it to more modern practices by referencing it to the prime interest rate or something like that. But I think just for a matter of, as Senator Taitikwe put it, cleaning things up and aligning things, I think it, it would be a benefit.
No, I certainly appreciate your input. I mean, if that, if that doesn't harm, then that's fine to address it. But at least just to, just to clarify your procedure now, if there is a dispute, at least you allow the rate payer to pay their current rate while you are working with them to review if there's an error in their billing. Because you know, if you go like from paying $50 to, you get a $500 water bill the following month, obviously, you know, there's either something wrong in the billing, or maybe there's a leak that you're not aware of, and you know, the owner might not be aware of that needs to be addressed. So I mean, how is that being, because it's not uncommon to hear complaints publicly about, you know, people being frustrated and trying to get, get those issues resolved if they very much feel that, you know, there's an error. And I, I'm sure there's, you know, I'm sure you probably have some faulty meters out there or, or others, like I said, where, you know, there may be an unknown leak, and, and you know, all of a sudden they have this big water bill they weren't expecting. So how is that being facilitated better now than, than how it was before?
Let me, let me address the, the meter comment. We don't have any, we've, we've completely changed out all of our problematic meters, so we're very confident in the performance of our current fleet of meters that are deployed. So we don't think that that's going to be much of an issue anymore. But for disputes that you, the examples that you cite, it is true, you know, someone could be paying $50, $60 a month, and then, then the bill the next month is $500. And they, they just can't believe that it's you know, something that is a result of them, it has to be GWA who's wrong. And, you know, this is a concept that is a little bit difficult to explain when you call into customer service or you're standing down at the customer service window, and you're, you're just having a conversation about what it possibly could be. And I think a lot of customers, our customer service representatives are, are trained on, to, to point out what potential issues there might be on the private side plumbing that would cause it. They go back and they check if there's a leak alert on the bill, which, you know, will print out on your bill if there's 24 hours of continuous usage. And so they try to explain all that, but it, it sometimes is difficult for customers to visualize or to understand. And so if it gets elevated to the next level, what we try, what we've been trying to do to improve the process now is to get the, the meter log, which provides three months of continuous hourly usage, analyze that, put a graph together, and then provide some background information. So based on the log data, for example, we could identify exactly when a leak appears to start and when it ends, what the, what the, the rate of flow for the leakage is. And for example, if it's, you know, one gallon a minute, or that goes on for a certain number of days, it could be, you know, thousands and thousands of gallons, but the customer doesn't believe he uses. But when you break it down to, hey, that's one gallon a minute or less than one gallon a minute, and that is indicative of a leaky toilet flap valve. And you explain it that way. You show them the log. If you can graph it out visually, it helps them to, to see where the usage started and what their baseline was and how it, at this point, jumped up to this. But all of those things we're doing now, in fact, we, Chris and I worked on one last week with a customer who was just really elevated. If they can't handle it at customer service and it gets elevated, then at Chris's level or my level, we're providing more information to help them to see what the issues might be. And sometimes, you know, we, if it doesn't get resolved that way, we test the meter, and if the meter's faulty, then, you know, we provide a credit to the customer.
As you mentioned, so if, if you're noticing that there's a continuous use of 24 hours and you're sending out a monthly bill, so GWA would automatically, you have a note on the, on a customer bill that indicates, you know, how, how would they see that? What would it say? What should they be looking for? Because normally you get your bill, you're just looking at what your monthly statement is and what you have to pay. What does GWA put there so the customer can perhaps, they might not be aware of it. Some of these leaks can be under the ground, they're not visible. Or like you said, it could be running, water running on the toilet, and, and, you know, they don't think anything of it or think it has much impact until they get the bill at the end of the month. What is the, so what's your standard with regards to that?
I'll start, and then I'll ask Chris to, to provide additional information. But on the bill, when you do have continuous usage and it's detected by the meter in the read, then highlighted in yellow, there is a notice that says you may have a private side leak. Please check your premise piping, something along those lines. And then I think, Chris, maybe you could talk about how we're trying to improve it so that it's not just the monthly billing, but phone calls or?
Sure. So the, the box that Miguel was referring to, there, there's actually a, a box that sits right below your billing on the bill itself, and the box itself is yellow. And then within the box, it'll have the, the words, you know, that he had described. So that's for the bill. Now, other than that, right now, we're in the process of putting together a program where after each day, our crews go out, collect the reads, and then that cycles through the billing process. During that, if, if that particular meter that was read that day has a leak alert on it, the customers will start to receive automated dialing calls, emails, texts, and potentially a letter to alert them that they have a leak alert. And so, you know, those are, that's something that we're, we're going to implement for all customers that have those leak alerts. And so we're pretty close to getting that program launched. We're just waiting on some equipment to do the automated dialing.
Well, certainly will be good to see that when it happens, at least just to bring it to the customers. Like I said, I mean, we know some of these leaks could be under the ground, and they're not necessarily visible. And no one wants to pay anything more than they have to, certainly for, you know, getting the services that are being provided. So I appreciate that. We look forward to hearing, hearing your customer service program that you're going to launch with regards to providing additional notice to the customers. So hopefully it can be proactive and address the concern. With that, thank you to Mr. Baudalio, Mr. Padasi, and Madam Chair for the opportunity to comment and, and ask questions with regards to this bill. With that, thank you to Mr. Baddalio, Mr. Podasi and Madam Chair for the opportunity to comment and, and ask questions with regards to this bill.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. And so being that the persons to provide testimony on Bill 267-36, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statute of Use and Planning, for now, during the time is 4:11 PM. So do as I say and have a great day.
Thank you.